We thank you for the gift of talent that you've given so many of our students. In fact, you've given all of our students. And we especially thank you for the students that are here tonight and their parents and everybody that's here to support them. I ask that you be with us tonight in everything that we say and do. It gives glory to you and serves the students that you've put under our charge. We thank you once again though for everything and especially your son, Jesus Christ. In his name we pray. Amen.
United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start out with our North Star Awards. And again, we are very blessed to have a lot of our students here tonight to recognize for some really awesome achievements. I'm going to try to say a little bit about each one. So students, when I call your name, you can come up to the side here and I'll present you with your certificate. And I think one of our staff, Beth maybe, are you going to take their picture in front of the circle B here? And parents, if you would like that forwarded to you or you want to come and take your own picture, you can as well. Just tell us. We would love for you to stay for the whole meeting. That would be wonderful, but I understand that when we're done, if you don't wish to, you may exit. So thank you for coming this evening. So we're going to start with Duke Myers. Duke is one of our freshman wrestlers and he was named the National High School Coaches Association Academic All-American.
Very cool.
For those of you who may not know, Duke has had several, I'm going to let you hold your certificate here, I'm sorry. Duke has had several obstacles to overcome. So a couple of years ago, he was found to have hip dysplasia. And he had subsequently to have operations on both his right and left femur, having a screw put in both. And then I have, after those healed, he had to have a double hip reconstruction. And subsequent, those are two different surgeries, to do the right and left side separately and then to have the screws removed. Then he found he had an L5, I'm not going to try to attempt to say the word, can you say it?
I don't.
Maybe mom or dad can say it. He had to be in a brace for 16 weeks four. So basically, he missed almost two years on the mat and had to be homeschooled for a year due to recovery from all the surgeries. So he wasn't cleared by his doctors to start wrestling again until December 21st, 2020. And what is the amazing thing? He won our sectional, I hate to say sectional, and he was the champion on January 30th of '21, so about just over a month after. And then regional champion, February 6th, a couple of weeks after that. He placed fourth at semi-state and qualified for state. So he went down to State Street Force as a freshman and having two years off the mat and a lot of physical things to overcome. So we're very proud of you, Duke, and thank you for just being the epitome of determination and perseverance and a positive attitude. So thank you very much. Next, we have Ike Rubel. Ike is a junior. And he placed first in sectional, regional, and semi-state in his weight class. Congratulations. And he went down to State Street too, where he placed second for Belmont at state, which in wrestling is a huge accomplishment.
It says Duke Myers on it.
Oh, next month, sorry.
Oh, Duke has two, one for, I hope Duke has two.
Okay. Oh, and for the academic all-American, I'm sorry.
Very nice.
I need to listen. And I actually, I think I said this at a meeting that you weren't at, but I wanted to make sure that you knew and your parents knew. I actually got an email from one of the school's personnel that were in attendance down at state. And they wanted to make sure that I knew and we knew that at the final round, when they were holding up the hands of who won at the final round, that I think the gentleman who actually won maybe didn't show the best sportsmanship, but Ike, in typical Ike fashion, was a true great guy and didn't rise to the bait and was still very congratulatory toward him. And that person just wanted to make sure that I knew that they have watched you a lot and what a great young man you are and how poised you are. And even though you are a Wolverine on the mat, when it's over, you are, again, the epitome of a gentleman and a supporter of everyone who's working hard. So thank you, Ike, for representing Belmont North. Next, we have Dominic Litchfield, who is also a junior. And he won sectional and regional and placed third at semi-state and qualified for state as well in the 132 weight class. Another great representative for Belmont, another young man who's always said to be doing a great job for us and representing us with a lot of grace and class. And we really appreciate Dominic too, everything that you've done for us. So congratulations and good job. Mr. Myers, I know you are part of the coaching team and now going to be head coach for next year. Do you have anything to say about your guys here?
Oh, I just, I love these three so much. One is my son, but I love them all the same. I truly do, because I'm with them around the clock, year round, and they're very committed, passionate kids to everything they do. I'm very proud of them.
And a very taxing sport, all of them are, but a very difficult sport because it's individual to, to make it through that. So congratulations.
They're actually pretty good.
Okay, next we have Winston Brown, who is a sophomore. So he has a couple more years of having high expectations, right Winston?
That's right.
So Winston is a golfer, and I'm going to have to read my notes here. You tied first at regional with a score of 68. And you lost a three hole playoff for Medalist Honors at Regional. And you tied for 47th with a two-day total of 161 at state finals. And day one, you shot an 84. Day two, you shot a 76. I've never played golf in my life. I don't know what that means, but it sounds like it's pretty good. Congratulations. Okay, now we have some members of our track and field. So first, we have Cody Loshi, who was a senior this year. And Cody was a state qualifier in pole vault with a 13-foot vault at regional. Unfortunately, he sustained an injury at state. And so I'm sure that was very disappointing, but what an accomplishment in track and field to get to be a qualifier for state. So thank you very much. If you want to go have your picture taken, congratulations, Coach. I don't think Dion was able to make it.
Dion or Isaac?
Dion, just so you know, is a junior and he placed 16th at the state in the 3,200-meter run with a time of nine minutes and 37 seconds, which seems like an impossibility to me. And Isaac is another senior that we had, and he placed 16th in the 1,600-meter run with a time of four minutes and 25 seconds. And our last North Star Award tonight is Mason Murphy, another senior, recent grad. And he was a state qualifier in the shot with a throw of 54 feet, eight inches. Wow. Don't want you trying to hit me with that. And then at the state, you placed third, actually in the discus is my understanding, with a throw of 172 feet, four inches.
Thanks.
You can wing that stuff. And their principal, Erica Almus, is here. Erica, do you have anything you want to say about?
No, we just have an extremely talented bunch. So parents, thanks for coming tonight. It's nice to be able to recognize our kiddos and we'll get it out on social media for some good press, so it's good. Thank you.
If you guys would like to go outside and take some more pictures, you're more than welcome to families if you'd like to do that. Thank you very much for coming and thank you for helping your kids and supporting them get to the.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks again, much appreciated.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Awesome way to open a meeting. We have any public comment on agenda items? The public is here. With that being said, we'll move on to line item C, the consensus items. Review of the minutes from January 8th, the regular school board meeting, the June 22nd executive session, July 1st. We've had a couple workshops and then down to the additional information. Any changes, questions, comments, concerns?
The first one was all the overnight to Ran, Ohio. I thought that seemed a little ridiculous to go overnight, but.
They're walking.
Yeah, they're walking down.
It is good to see them start doing some of the things that they used to do.
Yeah.
That's the annual thing they went to.
That's great.
Do you have any questions, comments, concerns on the consensus items as presented? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the table by Tim, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dave. All those in favor announce by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Let that stand with a six to zero. On to D, a program update. Erin.
Erin and her folks do a great job for us. And again, during this pandemic and shutdown, they ended up feeding the whole county through our universal feeding program. One of the schools had some, I think, renovation going and their kitchen wasn't going to be able to supply. And the other one wasn't sure they had enough staffing, so they traveled, what, 20-some different stops.
Yeah, barnwide this year. That was through August. We saw some normality or balance out in September. So overall, through the, I haven't had an opportunity to be with you all since the pandemic outbreak. You're all catching this. But we had over 29 stops. We started off rather small and we added upon what the community needs were. We had the support with the busing. So we had bus drivers and bus parades and it was really a district-wide effort and it was awesome. So if we were to average out, I gave you guys a bunch of numbers, I love my numbers, that's approximately 700 meal kits delivered each time we go out. So even today, there is supply shortages and we just would have to try to get what we can get and put together what we could. Through the school year, we were under a few more restrictions than other districts, perhaps because we shipped to St. Joe and we shipped to Zion and we might have had to, you know, there was some interest from some daycares, et cetera. We had to maintain safety and quality of that product. And if you've ever been to a wedding banquet, generally, it's a buffet. We couldn't really service like that during the pandemic. So we did pre-portioned items. We did them in units or individual. There are some things we are going to adopt moving forward. We found them to be money-saving processes. We know that the students don't purchase a meal because of the fruits and vegetables, so we can save money by pre-portioning those items, packaging them. It allows us to freeze, heat, ship wherever we need to. And we're going to put more concentration into the entree items. Last year, we had several service sites. I mentioned our parochials. We also did something different with our seating to allow the spacing required, which offered a shift in where the high school students sat, the middle school students in the elementary. At the beginning of last year of September, we were feeding the middle school students up in the cafeteria. And there are some conveniences to that for the students. And rather than keeping the middle school kids up on top, we're going to try the elementary at the beginning of this year and bring our middle school students back down to the cafeteria area. So the cafeteria area is right by the kitchen. So when you're by the kitchen, you can open more, offer more, it's like being closer to the refrigerator. And the kids are hungrier at an older age. We've reformatted the service space, which is something that was beneficial to us. We put everything on wheels when we did the remodel, so I'm thankful that we did that. And that's going to allow us to reformat our serving space to serve the kids a little bit better. For our middle school students, we're going to offer them pizza. And that's a first thing. And it's been a popular item for our high school students, so we're hoping that raises our participation. As you can see with the numbers, if we compare 2019, and that would be 2018, 19 to 2020, 21, we were in a transitional period during 2019, 2020. Our kitchen closed for several months. So those weren't practical numbers shared. We went back a few years. So through a comparison, we did have a drop through a pandemic, through a different way of service. We're hoping to draw those numbers up by offering more entrees to the students, more choices to the kids. We are going to keep some of the things we learned through the pandemic. Like I said, the fruits and vegetables are going to be pre-portioned. We're also going to pre-portion our self-service on, or pre-made salads. Because self-service, there's too much fluctuation at this point for market pricing on produce. And rather than having, well, there's only three items that we can put out this week, we can manage that better in a pre-made service and pre-made portion, make it look a little bit, make it look a little bit better by adding fruit tarts and dressing and cookies and all the goodies, all the extras. As Kim mentioned, we did a lot of changes through the year and the district was a great support and we had some tremendous staff working for the department. We're looking forward to another school year. We're very optimistic and hope that we don't yet, we've been happy not to have to wear the mask and it trades see the kids' faces. So we've gotten back to the summer school and it's been a great transitional period to go back to, transition back to a more comfortable setting. Any questions?
These are just really impressive numbers. I mean, that's pretty cool stuff.
They are.
Yeah.
When you try to imagine how to keep whole things whole, a lot of these items were made for kids to cook at home. So the responses that we got from parents, it was almost a learning tool for those kids through the summer, how to reheat items, how to learn a life skill, so to speak. And that was one of the sideline items I never even thought about until a parent shared it with me, what that was.
Now, you mentioned picking up maybe some daycare, that you've had inquiries from some daycare places. Do you have the capacity to?
We have in the past. As you know, we service parochials. And that's based upon participation. There has to be cost-effective. We're a business.
Right, right, of course. Just don't want you guys to overtax yourself, you know? But if the capacity's there, I trust your guidance and your leadership.
There's a tremendous efficiency to being on one campus.
Good.
That is something we're fortunate to have now. We're no longer separated by buildings or so-called abilities. The staff all share the same type of abilities now. We're cross-training. We're very flexible. We're concentrating on promoting the numbers here on campus before we look.
Elsewhere, yeah.
And it's not something that we advertise. It's something that we're here as a supportive program. So when we mentioned preschool, we had a facility that they had a flooding. So at the first part of the year, they contacted us. We went ahead and included their numbers in our production and made that delivery. And we averaged about 30 to 50 a day. It was efficient for us to do it. And most importantly, we're supporting our community. And they, I think that's just a good way to build a great community.
It's always good with community, if you can support a community in any way, you know, that community looks at us as an asset and a resource in many different ways, including the great stuff you do, so.
Start building that relationship with the kids before they're even into the school age.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
On to old business. So we've been looking at all preschools' handbooks the last couple of months, and this is the second reading month. So they are all ready to be voted upon unless you've had any lingering questions. And again, these were just part of the required changes and adjustments of consensus. From what I remember, besides the three buildings trying to align their attendance policy so they look parallel, they're not exactly the same, but parallel based on age bands. Most other things were just slight, slight changes. Do we have any additional questions, comments, concerns? Take it as each line item then for each one? We don't have to, we can do all those ones? Okay, perfect. So do I have a motion on the table then to accept the changes as presented for the student handbooks for '21, '22 for the Belmont Middle School, Belmont Elementary School, and the Belmont High School? I'll make a motion. Motion on the table by Jill, seconded by Carla. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Let that stand with a six to zero. On to new business.
So the first thing under new business, I think this has been brought to you most years in recent history. There's always some changes in personnel that happen last minute between now and the start of school. And I think our next board meeting is the day before school, the students return. So Brent has, I think, historically asked, and I'm going to continue that tradition of requesting that you folks would allow us to place any needed new hires pending official board approval, of course, at the August, but that we can get them started and get them going through the processes of onboarding before official board approval at the next board meeting.
Do we have any questions, comments, concerns? Have a motion, want to accept that? We offer a grant, the permission to fill open positions prior to the school year.
So move.
On the table, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion on the table by Eric, seconded by Dave. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Let that stand with a six to zero vote. Line item two.
The DOE in August of 2020 started requiring local governing bodies to make policy, or they're using the word policy, policy or resolutions, that would require documentation for proof of residency. My understanding and background is I think there must be some states that border Illinois, Kentucky, or Ohio, or Michigan, that may have been including individuals on their membership roles that actually lived in a different state and taking state tuition funding for them, which is a big no-no. The state is now, they've already notified us, going to start watching that much more closely. So I think this is one of those things that they are going to be using to watch that. So we have been told that every year we have to adopt or re-adopt a policy that says how many proofs of residency we would require. Can't be any more than three. And it has to be documents that have a verifiable address and the parent or guardians or emancipated students legal name on them. So my proposal on the resolution was to require two, and it lists some things like utility bills, credit card bills, mortgage agreements, rental agreements, mortgage bills, things like that, for anyone that might be new to the district. And then we also had to have something if you were a previous enroller and had a change of address and I am asking for one proof of residency. We have to keep that in their, either a digital record, which would be Power School for us, or their permanent card. I, my assumption is there's probably going to be some random audits of this process upcoming. So again, you have a resolution that's just saying two proofs of Indiana residency for new enrollees to the district, one proof for any change of address for a previous, previously enrolled student.
And this is dated, I mean, the required timeframe to present that?
Yes.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
We have to have some internal monitoring. Our folks who enroll, there's usually a process of enrollment, are going to have to check, are going to have to check for what state they live in. And that's just going to be something we're going to have to be a lot more, especially since we border Ohio, we're going to have to be a lot more careful about. It's nothing that we have done to be, you know, serpitous or anything like that, but it is something that can happen easily because sometimes people can jump across the border. And I think they have things in there, I think I did share the whole memory in them with you. The student starts your school and then has to move. There are some protections for that. There's also protections for homeless, foster children, things like that have a different set of parameters that we can invoke over them.
So the moving is only if they leave state and come back here? Not that we have to, we have to, or they move?
Basically, the ones that had been here, if when they get, let's say they had moved sometime in the interim next year and they're getting ready to enroll this year again and they have a different address than they had last year, they would need to give us a proof of Indiana residency for this school year. Moves in the interim, unless they are giving us the information, we don't really have a way of tracking that unless they're giving, unless they're updating their demographic information, then we would probably ask for a proof of residency, just have that done. But we don't really have a good way of tracking it if they're not giving us updated information during this school year.
Any other comments? And a motion on the table then to approve the North End Proof of Indiana Residency Policy as Presented.
I'll make that motion.
A motion on the table by Tim, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion on the table by Tim, seconded by Eric. All those in favor announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Line item, we'll let that stand with a six to zero. Line item number three.
So there was new legislation that happened in this last legislative session about having meetings where board members are able to communicate electronically. And there were a lot of things that had to happen really quickly last year when all this went down with the shutdown. And now that they've had time to look at things a little more thoroughly, they've created a whole new set of legislation. We did re- We did receive our update from the OLA, and the new legislation impacted four different policies of ours, which you have, the proposed drafts. So this would be a first reading. Are there any questions or comments? It impacted basically the definition of what a meeting is and how it can happen. I think broadening the scope that it can happen electronically. It has a situation for meetings happening under a emergency. If the governor, if he would put out an emergency situation again. That changes how voting needs to happen, or as how voting would need to happen if anyone were participating electronically. And I know I did forget the fourth thing, probably. Probably something I mentioned was combining things. Basically, how many electronic participations a board member may have consecutively, as well as over the course of a year. I think you can only have two consecutively before you have to attend in-person, and you have to attend at least fifty percent in-person in the year.
I think somewhere in there didn't it mention that there were certain activities that you couldn't vote on from a distance?
Yes, so anything that is to do with a budget, or a referendum, or adopting curriculum, they have a list of like five things, I think that you have to be present. Well, you, you don't have to be present, or you can't vote if you are not physically present on those items.
Scott, you gone through these?
Nope.
Not yet?
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
This is just the first reading.
This first reading, right.
You'll get a, you'll get one for time before we vote.
Any other comments on that, since it's first reading, we don't have to make a official motion to it? We've looked at the North Adams twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two continuing to end.
So there's a lot of conversation happening across the state about these plans. This is something that we do as a board need to go through and approve, and I know there's been a lot of people waiting for this information. So I gave you, we've been having some conversations with the administrative team, and you've been giving me and some feedback along the way. For the public's and our information, I would want to start off with just discussing how difficult this was when the governor turned these decisions over to the local governing board starting July first. I know we are lucky enough to have a couple of members on our board who do come from a healthcare background, but lots of board members across the state do not have that luxury. So it's required a lot of research, a lot of comparing with Mike Williams, our Adams County Department of Health Commissioner, and looking at the state DOH, IDOH, as well as the CDC. And then just looking at it from a common sense standpoint with trying to provide the best situation we can to educate kids, but still make sure they're safe. So I think we've done our due diligence. So kind of where we are this year, there's a couple of things I wanted to highlight as we're going through this packet. First of all, as we found last year with students, our students did experience some learning loss because of the virtual learning, and that's not atypical of what's happened nationwide. We definitely found once students returned and could be onsite and in-person with their teacher and their peers, that learning certainly improved for the majority of students. For that reason, we are not wishing to offer a virtual option next year except for a couple situations, and that would be during the time that a student may be excluded from school from quarantine due to either being positive for COVID, or close contact with someone positive for COVID, or those students who because of their IEP or five oh four may need to be educated separately from general population for whatever reason. Those students would have the opportunity to have some type of virtual learning or other combinations of, of learning, to have their content delivered to them. Other things to highlight in this section, it is also our goal, because learning in-person is so much more effective, to avoid as much as, as absolutely possible that there would be no more shutdowns. I can't promise that there couldn't be. So our rule of thumb would be if we would ever have fifty percent or more students quarantined at any time, or have the inability to staff key positions because of staff quarantining, that would be the only time we would consider having a shutdown. We're not anticipating that, but we wanted to give a little bit of preview and anticipation to folks so that they would kind of have an understanding of what, what data points we're looking at to even have to start having those conversations. Other things that we would like to talk about is we are going to continue with just pushing good hygiene practices because as we found out, the whole keeping your hands clean before you eat, before you touch your face, and trying to just, again, stop the spread and transmission of germs, did a lot just in numbers of kids we had out for colds and flus and things. So clean hands in, clean hands out would continue to be a focus. Our custodians and transportation folks are going to continue to clean and spray rooms nightly and clean buses every day to try to again help with the transmission. So that's going to continue to be a focus. Bussing is still something that we're probably going to have some discussions tonight on. There are several schools of thought when it comes to bus masking. Again, there is the, the situation that we have some requirements in place at the federal level that are at counterheads to some of the edicts that came from our governor's most recent mandate from his executive order, giving local governing bodies control of some of these decisions. I can tell you, there's still a lot of conversation happening across the state about which thing trumps what, and what that could mean to liability, and to what is most safe for our students. So I'm going to be interested to hear the conversations that we have, probably in a few minutes on that, because I know that is, that is a topic that has a lot of conversation happening among a lot of boards right now. For masking, the CDC and the Department of Health at the state level are not requiring masking in-person and in classrooms. They are recommending it, and their recommendations are if you are vaccinated, masks are not necessary. It's always an option, of course, if you're high-risk or just feel more comfortable wearing one, but they're not necessary. If you're unvaccinated, they do recommend, if you're unvaccinated, to be wearing them indoors when you cannot be socially distanced more than six foot apart. If you're outside and you can socially distance relatively well, then those are going to not be necessary in those types of settings either. Of course, social distancing is always good judgment. My suggestion for the board on masking is because since these are recommendations from the CDC, and we showed that we did use good thought processes in when we quarantined, and we were pretty fastidious about close contact tracing, and put folks quarantining when we thought that they could have been exposed to a positive case. We had a pretty good run of not having a lot of kids showing up to be positive. So we, I would like to recommend that we make masks optional in the classroom. The caveat that I had with that is I do feel that staff have a higher responsibility, because we are public officials, to maintain the safety of our students. So those staff who are unvaccinated, I would ask that they're working less than three feet with students, that they would wear a face covering, just again to add a higher level of protection for our students. We will contact trace and quarantine as recommended by the CDC. And we're going to have this long paper on our website after you folks approve whatever parts of it, whatever final decisions you end up making. So I would encourage anyone in the public to review those, the long piece, because there's a lot of nuances to it, they're kind of hard to go through verbally. But basically, it's pretty similar to what it has been, and we will be pretty religious in context. Become symptomatic, and if they start to show symptoms, then they are under the same guidelines as someone unvaccinated. If they're unvaccinated and asymptomatic and found to be a close contact, there are some opportunities to return early under the new guidelines with some enhanced precautions. We still are under the direction to report any positive cases we have in the school to the Department of Health. And we are hoping to produce, start with a, as wide open as a situation as we can. We want to start seeing kids go on field trips where, when it's safe and where they're reporting to if their positivity rates are low. If we can maintain a reasonable amount of safety for our kids, we're going to start seeing, and we'll start seeing more visitors and community uses of our space again, again, under some, some guidelines to try to ensure reasonable safety for our students and staff. Our nurses will continue to be probably a heightened sense of care to make sure that if anyone presents, it could be infectious to keep those folks separate from others, people who might be coming in to get routine care. Again, you have folks that come in every day for medications, or just because they may have a headache and want some Tylenol, and you don't want to risk exposing them to something if they have someone infectious that's recently come in before they can clean. Extracurriculars and all those events, they're going to continue to follow. My recommendation would be what the IHSAA and their associated professional organizations would promote that has been pretty successful for them and fairly consistent across the state, I would say, which has been nice. For water, we have bottle fillers across the district. We were lucky enough, though we didn't have them, to have them installed this year through some of our CARES money. So we're going to provide every student with a Belmont logo water bottle at the beginning of the year, and every staff member as well, and so they will have that to carry, of course, if they can bring their own. So bottle fillers are what we're still going to have available for students. That's some information on here about special education. Again, there are some students who may have some medical necessities or other needs that need to be addressed differently, and we would just encourage any parent who had a child that they thought needed to have some special interventions because of concerns for COVID, or really anything else, to be contacting the school starting in the end of July, and we can get some of those case conferences set up and start making those plans and have those interventions in their IEP as part of the case conference committee decisions. And finally, the plan is just some general information about vaccinations, where they can find out more information about where to get them if they wish, what ages are currently being, are currently eligible, and which types of vaccines are given and which, by which organizations presently. So that is the thirty thousand-foot view. Again, there's a lot of conversations happening, and so I'm, I'm interested to hear what you folks are thinking. Some of the questions you've been pondering, I know this is something I've been encouraging you to think about for the last several weeks.
Do you have a couple of questions?
Sure.
With regard to our screening measures, are we actively asking these questions, or are we doing a more passive approach?
We are passive at this point. If they present in the nurse's station with any of these symptoms, and there is not a ready explanation, I have seasonal allergies, I have congestion every day, those types of things. Certainly, the fever is a pretty much dumb deal. If you present with a fever over a hundred point four, we're going to call parents and ask you to go home, isolate you in sickbay till someone can pick you up. We recommend, and I think I've had the statement made by some of you that we probably need to remind parents a little more often that some of these symptoms, I know they may want to come because they have a test, or they might have a contest that day or something like that, but there are some situations that if you're really ill with a fever, or really ill with something that's not readily explained as a typical situation for you, stay home and get well. Yeah.
With some of the new CDC school guidance calls, I don't know what, this is an article that I just recently received within the last few days, that they are identifying the, the distance is narrower now at three feet as opposed to the six feet. What are we going to maintain?
In the classroom, my recommendation is to accept the three feet. We, we know best practice for learning is collaboration, collaborative, and a lot of our classes practice some, some models, especially like our MAP, that is highly collaborative. This last year, they had to go to the traditional rows, which I understand, and we support it for the situation we were in, but we are really wanting to get back as much as we can to optimal learning, and collaboration is important for that. So my recommendation is to accept the three foot.
So I thought I read where that was. That was a question more than this is a question.
With regard to our nurse's clinic, do we have a room that we can set aside as a COVID potential room, or a room that's a bit more quarantine as opposed to filtering through the clinic? I think just as better practice for prevention, more than anything.
The high school, we do have a separate sickbay room where there are doors on the sickbay. The elementary, middle school, it's curtained, bays. No, there's not a separate room, but that is something, again, I think that the nurses are using kind of discretion. If they are concerned, it could be a COVID-related thing. I think they are trying to maybe take a conference room or something like that until it can be cleaned, and probably trying to clean the clinic too before we have normal traffic coming.
Oh, no, good question. And I think like Kim, believe it too, I mean, I am relying on you and Stacy, your, your input on this, because this is clearly what, I mean, this is what you guys do. You know, I see where the ISBA attorney is saying we are subject to the CDC guidelines, yet we have a governor that, that at least implies that we're not.
But implication is not.
I know. So am I assuming you're?
My position is that if we don't follow the CDC requirements, we place ourselves at liability risk. That's.
Liability for potential litigation against parental parents or somebody?
Parent, if a child becomes on our bus, we can track that and prove it. Obviously, litigation involves a whole bunch of fact-setting scenarios, but if there's a regulation issue out there with the National Health Department, essentially, it said you're required to wear a mask on public transportation, and we say, nah, you don't have to do it on ours, we've assumed the risk of spread on our public transportation.
How would you prove that it?
Well, I can't get it, I, I'm not a litigator on the example of the plaintiff's case.
Yeah, but that's certainly. But you've opened yourself up for at least the accusation.
Yeah. And anytime you get sued and you have to pay an attorney, you've lost. When you're defending yourself, you're going to spend a lot of money.
So the new state bill that they, didn't they pass that new state bill that says you're not liable if somebody says that you got sick on the road?
Yeah, that's right.
Well, yeah, this is a federal rule, and the state doesn't always trump federal. So it takes a federal court and alleges. I'm just telling you, I don't want to play, I'm, I'm going to play on the conservative role for the school here. And that is, we got a regulation, if we choose not to follow it, we take the consequences of not following it. Whether that state statute could be upheld or knocked down because it's an undue trampling on individuals' rights when they have somebody who's assumed a risk by not allowing it. You know, it'd be one thing if we had a, they're required to wear their masks, they wear their masks, and somebody still gets sick, we don't have liability issue. But we chose to ignore a safety concern, we could potentially have that law stricken down as to adults to that situation.
Because isn't there somewhere in the literature that I've been going through this week? If you comply with those requirements, then you don't have, or you actually have an immunity.
Correct. But when you. Normally, we have immunity anyhow, but when you assume a risk.
Lose that immunity to litigation.
Right. And that's my position on it completely.
I guess, you know, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying. But ultimately, you know, I, I want to think it was best for the student, which could be interpreted many different ways. That's the trouble. I mean, depending on what your predisposition is to that argument could determine what you can argue. I mean, we obviously allow the students to wander the hallways, you know, in a, one could argue is an enclosed space. You know, rubbing against each other.
Nearly as narrow as a bus or an airplane.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. The classrooms, I mean, although, you know, with the AC systems and everything like that, you can almost argue that's an, I mean, there's a lot of that.
Right, CDC hasn't said anything.
I know, and that's the thing.
Right, so what you're really discussing here is whether or not their criteria for determining. So, what you're really discussing here is whether or not their criteria for determining is good or bad. All I'm saying is, they told us this. If we choose to ignore that, we take on risks. That's the only thing about, you could debate a thousand scientists and put 500 each side, and they're all going to come up with a different argument.
But because the CDC has come up with this...
But they put out there and said, and if we decide to ignore that, we do it on our own risk.
Is that what we're looking at, the difference here because the busing one is a CDC requirement versus the inside of the school is a CDC recommendation?
Right, so, yeah.
Which I thought would be really hard to do, to just require it on the bus but nowhere else. What I liked about our busing system is that the assigned seating, which gives a little more control, and they have them spread out, which is nice. So, to me, it kind of felt like, that seems silly, you know, we're going to, we're going to force it here, but nowhere else. But my one question for Scott was, but then would we be putting ourselves at risk, the school corporation?
That's my take.
And that, that's a big, you know, that's a big part of it.
That's why I tried, that's kind of the philosophy behind it all.
To keep ourselves protected.
You lay out something, you choose to ignore it, you assume the risk.
And I can't come up with a legitimate argument that says we're harming the students by requiring them to put masks on while they're in the bus. I cannot legitimately convince them.
You're getting a flight somewhere, you're going to wear a mask the whole time.
I did that.
You know, so, you know, it's...
The time you walk into the...
You're in the airport.
Or the time you leave the airport.
No.
So, you're still there.
Yeah. If you're here, they get off the bus, they're peeling it off and heading in the building.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we changing any of the requirements on the bus as far as the spacing and assigned seating and so forth, if we keep the mask mandate in place?
The spacing has always been as much as possible. We only have so many buses and so much time to transport kids that doesn't become a lot of time when kids get in on really early or off really late. So, we have assigned seats, and I'll say as a byproduct of that, it is tremendously cut down with behavior issues on the bus. So, that's a positive right there. We will space as much as possible, and that will continue. As far as if we would have to require masks, the school is prepared to help supply those as students may forget. I don't think our desire is to make that situation punitive whatsoever. It never was desired to be punitive if a student forgot. So, we would make sure that we step up and help provide those supplies if we would need to.
And obviously, if the CDC changed their recommendations at any point in time, we can at the next meeting revisit it.
I think the whole plan actually is open for that.
Yeah, anything, I guess.
More stringent, more stringent, more or less stringent.
It's always working.
With this situation with COVID in particular, it could go either way.
So, I'm assuming this includes like all athletics, so when they go from school to school, they're wearing the mask then too, so...
On the bus.
On the bus.
But not when they're wrestling each other.
But they're under wrestling, yeah.
Or basketball.
Or best.
It's not meant to make a lot of sense. And that's the hard part for us, because even in the healthcare profession with people that have gotten vaccinated as opposed to not vaccinated, everybody's like, well, I've been vaccinated now, so I'm immune to it. Well, not 100%. So, I mean, you're coming into any facility, we're still wearing required masks when you walk in. You may have ridden 50 miles with five other people, but when you walk in our facilities, you're going to be required to wear a mask.
Hospital or whatever, doctors, dentists, still require...
So, what are your thoughts on the...
I have a lot of mixed emotions. I feel too that we're kind of redundant in practices if we're going to mandate it in, you know, the bus, but then when they get off the bus, they're going to still be in close proximity. So, it is hard for me to grasp, but I feel that it's a best benefit for us with all the research that we've done to follow the CDC guidelines, knowing that, well, we can adjust it. We've made how many adjustments this last year and half years? What's one more? I don't, I don't want to force anybody's hand in saying, you know, I don't want to restrict that child to 100 because I see both sides of it. We live it. But I think this is the new norm, and I think we're just going to have to continue to adjust it.
Well, we've got to protect our school. I mean, if it comes down to liability, and it could change any time, then, I mean, like you said, we've been adjusting for a year now, so...
Well, I'm sure that my children, like, have to say, but I feel like, putting all personal thoughts, personal opinions aside, to take on that liability would be personally irresponsible as a board.
Even if it doesn't make sense.
Even if it doesn't make sense, like it does sound, but it's not meant to make sense.
Right. Anything from a perspective of looking at protection of our students, our staff and their families?
I mean, for how long we've had them wearing masks, and I don't think anybody's, you know, dropped off the face of the earth because of it or something, so... Yeah, and I, and I thank you for your input, because it makes no sense. Yet, by trying to make sense of something, we open ourselves up for liability, it makes no sense.
Right.
I was just going to ask, so, would have been the car riders, those car riders, they're close together, they're, are we just spreading out more?
Is that considered public transportation?
Not considered public transportation. So, we just want to find it.
What I feel for our bus drivers is because I feel like they're going to get a lot more personal kickback from having to reinforce something like this when it's not truly their fault. It's not truly something that they said has to be done. So, that's what's concerning to me. So, I just feel like the most communication that we can offer is going to better those efforts and explanation. I mean, it's, every day we have to learn something, and if it's why we're doing what we're doing and still not understanding it, then that's part of the process. I mean, that's, it's unfortunate, but...
I know that I heard from one superintendent that whose district is in a city and that they have public transportation as part of what, who transports their children, and in addition to bus, school bus transportation. And they're like, we're not even discussing this because our kids, two-thirds of them use public transportation to get to school, and it's a non-negotiable area. So, that's another way of looking at it, is it's transportation, and depending on where we may live or what transportation we may use, it would happen again. If you fly, you've got to use it. It's not what we want, and I understand your concerns. The two policies do seem incongruous, incongruent rather, to each other. But I think they're addressing, the transportation piece is addressing a different audience. We're just included in that audience, whereas the other piece is simply school-specific. But like Scott said, it's not a matter of congruity. It's a matter of, is this the requirement, and what could that mean for us if we don't abide by it? I guess it's ultimately working, so...
And it's not a big problem. The big deal is the kids are going to be able to start having normal school, a big deal. The kids are the ones that are wearing the mask more than adults a lot of times. They're not going to have a problem with it for that short period of time, as long as the education part, they don't have to. I mean, if we were, if we were debating on whether or not they were wearing a mask in school, I'd be, you know, I would not be sitting here complaining. But the bus, the buses.
A few minutes.
Yeah.
Scott, is it possible to put language in there that this would say if the board chose to say we were going to follow the CDC's requirement, and then if the CDC's requirement changed to, we wouldn't really have to wait for a reconvening of the board?
Correct. Yeah, you can build in, you can build in triggers. Do that all the time.
Probably actually should, on the off chance, hope and pray, but on the off chance that we're to get more stringent, we'd probably need to have a trigger in there anyway, if it gets worse or less, say we would automatically be able to change it without all of us having to come here and do that.
So, is it okay to verbalize that modification and still approve the plan, or do we need to wait, review it again and...
That's up to you. You can make whatever changes tonight and off if you wish. You want to revisit it, although I know it's kind of important, again, to get those same things as fast as possible for the students. But again, it's a policy, if you adopt it tonight, and come August, you've had a wholesale change of heart, you're going to get attention. We're not going to chisel this one instill.
Well, I would like to propose for what you have in front of you as a draft for bus transportation under the second way of looking at this, option B, I guess, that we would change the language to reflect the North Adams Community Schools will endorse following the CDC guidelines concerning masking on school transportation. And then just leave it at that. If they change before school starts, then we will communicate with our stakeholders, but there are no masks required now.
Right. And essentially, you're telling them, well, you're really only doing this with regard to the transportation piece. The in-class piece, it's going to stay the same unless you get some significant mandates that come down, and then the board probably needs to revisit that.
Or we see a significant uptick.
Yeah.
I imagine this is something that, again, we'll all be talking about fairly continually, are just updates on where we add, what's happening. Luckily, we have a very good health department that has been very communicative with us and tells us, hey, we're, because what's on the dashboard for the government is often a week or more behind the statistics. So, usually, our health department locally is telling us, we're seeing a dramatic increase, you're going to see the numbers go up. So, that's all good information to be able to have and try to get in front of something a little more. Were there any other parts of this you wanted to discuss, or...
So, let me answer this with the screening measures. So, if a kid goes down to the office at 100.5 temp, gets sent home, and two days later they don't have a temp anymore, what's the process of coming back?
Well, typically, when you're sent home with a temperature under this pandemic system, we would ask that you be 24 hours fever-free, and then we would also ask that we report to the nurse's station at the beginning of the day and just have her assess you quickly. Differentiate from us, write in checks out. Same thing happens when we have had a quarantine, someone we ask that they are assessed by the nurse, just to make sure they're doing okay and it's the most... I think it is important for me to, and I will be emphasizing to parents, that the CDC is recommending masking for anyone unvaccinated, and that would be for certain any children under 12 because they're not eligible for a vaccine, and then anyone who's chosen not to, it's still their recommendation. Even though we're sending is mask optional, that does not mean that's what their decision needs to be if they feel something else needs to happen, if they have any other concerns.
Do I include in it as optional?
Yeah.
But it's okay if they...
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. And we will continue to have masks in the office if someone wishes to have one. It's no problem. Any other questions? Comments? It's progress, right?
It is. Forward progression. We're back together. That's great.
We're getting it now.
Yeah. So...
We're the whole group.
Right. Without any other questions, comments, concerns, if you want, we have a motion then on the table to approve the North Adams 2021-22 continuing education plan as presented with the modifications as discussed.
I'll make a motion. Motion on the table by Carla, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion on the table by Carla, seconded by Eric, to approve the approval of the North Adams 2021-22 continuing education plan with the modifications as presented. All those in favor announce by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Would that stand with a six to zero vote? Next line item, that is the public official and physician bonds. So, this is, again, a logistical thing that we need to do every year. For those who didn't know, bonding is just a type of insurance for some of our staff. We handle a lot of our money, and as a corporation, we do have a lot of money coming in and out. So, this is basically insurance to protect them and us in case something would happen to that money. And so, our treasurer, Bev Quinn, deputy treasurer, Darlene Nguyen, well, we're going to strike her, I guess, until she, she needs it, until she changes positions. Our ECA treasurer, Bev Lichtensteiger, and Lori Bommer, our administrative assistant, are all those who are bonded for us. Any questions, comments, concerns? With that, do I have a motion on the table then to approve the public official and physician bonds for the district as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the table by Tim, second.
Second.
Seconded by Jill. All those in favor announce by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Would that stand with a six to zero vote? The 21-22 transportation handbook first read. This is, again, you have that in your board packet. This is an annual revision. I don't think they will make your revisions in it this time around. So, this is just a first reading, so no action needed. Just wanted to see if anyone had any questions.
So, it's all, looks like only a couple of names, phone number, I think they added email.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was the only, okay. All right, thank you.
Questions, comments with the information as presented? Going to the 2021-22 United Way, I love you.
So, United Way is a group that we partner with, and as such, one of our administrators sits on their board, Tiffany Hany is sitting on it this year. As part of being a board member, we are expected to volunteer so many hours and to help with their fundraising efforts, and in, in return for that, they give us some money for Backpack Bash, which will be upcoming August 3rd, I think. I want to make sure I get that date right because we're really excited about it. I think it's going to be a really good time. We're having it in-person here at school with lots of fun activities, August 2nd. Is that what you're, August 2nd time? I think it is six to eight. I believe it's six to eight here at the school. That, and also, we have first responder lunches, which bring in some of our first responders to have lunch with their elementary kids, and they help support those costs as well. So, this is just an MOU that basically that says there is a new Florida incorporated corporation, and we will supply some of our, and if it's possible for hours, they will give us some of these donations.
Is that different than extending the term? Because I know... Now, we're on the board meeting as an executive group, we're going to request...
Right, she is on the board.
Okay, so she doesn't have to request.
Right, it's already...
Just a quick question. I, I think this is the same MOU that we've been signing for years. One of the things, we'll continue to be governed, governed by a volunteer board which operates without ethical or legal conflicts of interest, I understand that, but are we technically considered a volunteer board?
Nope.
Okay.
Might be a board.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yes, I see that change.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think this has been the same.
Okay, it's probably just been something they...
We've missed.
Need to strike the elected board or the volunteer board.
I guess, didn't know if volunteer had a broad, that we're here under our own...
Against the argument, if you run for election, it's voluntary.
Yeah, yeah, so, that's why I don't think it's a deal in the local, but, yeah.
Okay, I will notify them and make sure they understand that probably needs to be a change in the board initiative. be a change in the board issue there.
Looks great. Been a good partnership so far.
Need our approved vote. Do you have a vote on that? Okay. Turn a motion on the table to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two United Way MOU as presented with the modifications.
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the table by Tim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Carla. All those in favor announce by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. Would that stand with a six to zero vote, the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Bowen Center?
So we are very blessed to have three partnerships in our community to help support our students with their mental health and social emotional needs. And tonight, we have one of the MOUs that we do annually, that just gives them permission to work with our students and basically approves the process. We used to work with the families and them. So Bowen Center is one of those, and we have their MOU tonight to approve. Next month, we'll have Adams Behavioral Health, and there is a monetary cost for our participation in that with Bowen Center, there is not. They deal mostly, well, they deal completely with our students who have Medicaid, and, and so they work with the parent and the student's Medicaid processes there. So this is just, again, an annual need for us to approve this agreement so that they have permission from you folks to come in and be a service provider for our students. Again, parents have had to fill out a registration process and prove them to work with their child, but they can do that here with both agreements from the board and from the parent.
Is that agreement with Bowen Center here?
Do you have one that wasn't part of the package?
It was supposed to come late for the thing.
But it's, I think it's waiting to be signed, but you can look at it.
Is it on there somewhere? It wasn't.
It's supposed to come. And, and the, the H.
Okay.
Actually, it's signed by twenty twenty without the notes.
Okay.
So because there's something, I do have a copy of it.
Isn't the same one we've signed before?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. I mean, I'd be okay with.
Well, we need to do that because it is important that there is permission given for those organizations to come in with their students, those instant issues. And that other districts I know where outside organizations that didn't have formal agreements coming in and working with kids that can be followed to this situation.
If we table it?
We can table it for this month, this spring.
Is that too much of a?
No.
Is it okay?
It's not.
Okay.
Lori, we'll just wait till next month. That's my call.
And then twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, yeah, just working on that. So line item's eight, nine, the agenda, and then we'll take until next month. Onto the superintendent report.
So I don't have a whole lot. We've just been working quite a bit trying to get ready for school, and even though it's still early July, it feels like it is literally just around the corner. So a lot of the things that we focused on the last year and a half, two years, I've dealt with COVID and COVID-related things. I just wanted to reiterate how excited we are to start a year, have things opening up quite a bit more, being able to see our kids, and again, go back to creating that learning environment optimally, and working on getting our kids back up to speed, doing what they need to do, getting the focus back on learning, and not just on health and wellness completely. And we have a lot of exciting things happening. So the community will be hearing from myself, as well as some of the administrators and other school leaders about what's upcoming. We have a lot of exciting things with opportunities our kids are gonna be able to take part of, and I think it's gonna be a great year, and we're really excited to get going.
Looks good. Excited, pretty nice to see some normals.
Yes, or at least a new norm.
See faces. Let's start with that.
Exactly. Third year at the school without the.
And there are a lot of new faces for people.
You know, it's gonna be easier now. You picked a heck of a time to come in, so.
You have a record, you just said.
It's gonna be relative.
I, I will say that everyone who's had to make decisions for any organization, not just this one, but it's been, well, several months for lots of people. And I think, I think there's a lot of grace that has been and should be extended to folks who've had to make tough decisions, because it's not easy.
With any of the earlier stuff, would we ask, can we ask the music, is that, can we get this thing? All right. Do we have any other matters to come before the board?
Aren't we supposed to be, for the organization?
Yeah.
We're gonna be starting school here.
I did put together a simple narrative document, if that was something you wanted. Basically, it's just strengths and areas for growth under each of the competencies that I put in the share drive folder. So at some point, I guess, didn't want to say we shouldn't sit down and go over that.
Kind of the rules.
That's what I tell.
For so long, years ago, we didn't do anything with it. Is it something that we should possibly, we should probably do prior to our next meeting, or what is your?
Your schedule.
Is it our, okay.
Can we also, we've essentially voted on this as anything, if we can't get everybody to be here, can we?
Well, yeah.
We could do.
But with the executive session.
The executive session, it's a more flexible, can't make decisions in it.
Could we do it after next meeting?
Right, it's a conversation.
Yeah, we need.
Revaluation personnel, which is a covered, okay.
And this won't be the evaluation.
No. It's still related to the evaluation.
Yeah, we're, we're more going over.
Right. It's definitely an executive session.
Right, it's an executive session, but it's not the, the room break and all of that, that we, this is.
Sort of the kickoff.
Right, right.
So we'll share that with Stacy, that is the president, and have her get the real signal on that, and.
But it might be easier if somebody to get back with us, so we're not convening the other.
Yeah, just one of you sends me something, that's good enough.
That's it. That's it. Okay. Now it works. Any other matters to come before the board? Board members and or public comment?
You guys have anything? No chat? Okay, all right. Cool, thanks a lot. Sorry, I gotta run really quick for the meeting.
A lot more.
But not the, the partisan, so. We need to have a luncheon tonight.
I'm sure that would be quite a conversation there.
After all that, I don't know that extreme.
Oh, shoot, seriously?
See the last.
Right?
I'm not lying, right?
So you came over and said somebody, somebody going up there. Yeah.
Good seeing you.
Yeah, good seeing you. How are you, sir?
Good seeing you again. All right, sorry, I can't talk too much.
I just wanted to.
No, we're just in town.
Say hi to some of these, yeah, so, all right, we'll see. See you guys.
See you.
I'm a lawyer.
I'm just an attorney, so.
Yeah, no, that's nobody's.
I haven't been in a taxi for a while.
They all have their number blocks now.
Your friend made it to Mark's.
No worse than usual.
Yeah, absolutely.
The way she said, you know, you're about a long.
I know he was on the school.
No, they, they were there, but.
Who was up there? No, Steve Street.
You always flip my spirit. You're there today.
How are you doing? I'm here. What's the setup?
It worked out, it worked out this time, for sure.
And there'll be another two cities, and they come by every.
We're here for each other, three.
And I can go through that.
How's it going? What's going on?
Oh, I got a blue tie.
All right. Busy, busy, busy.
Oh, shoot, I almost forgot.
You forget your hour, that's it.
Did Tim forget to sign?
I'll bet he did.
I'll bet he, yeah, he took off.
Tim was ready to go.
Yeah, okay.